Morning, and I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10:00 meeting, 10:05 meeting of November 15th at 2022. At this time, please silence your electronic devices and mute your microphones, and let's rise for the invocation and pledge.
O merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can you please call the role?
Yes. District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 3 Chairman Starkey.
Here.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, now is the time for public comment, and citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on any other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comments from those who are here in person, then we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against the Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated, and after two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound, and you should close your comments. WebEx participants should be disconnected, will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. And Madam Clark, do we have anyone signed up this morning?
We do, and Madam Chair, just so that you know, we do not have anyone signed up on WebEx for this morning, so we do have two people signed up in person. We have Anthony Homer, followed by John Tomsoo.
Morning.
Morning, Anthony Homer, addresses 1875 Goldenrod in Sarasota. Last time I stood in front of the Board here, I thought there was a misunderstanding. I thought that there was some data that had been compiled regarding the Rad Sports operation at Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus that possibly needed to be discussed. Then, on October 25th, the Board was misled and misrepresented some data, and you approved that notice of default for which the county had no support. After Rad Sports provided the county the data that was proving that we are not in default, the county attorneys informed us that they would not issue the notice of default, and instead would engage in discussions, which is exactly what we were hoping for and we had requested. Since then, the county has refused to engage in any substantive discussion. It has not provided any data on which it based its claims to put Rad Sports on notice of default, and despite saying otherwise, on November 4th, the county's attorneys issued a notice of default. This is different than the one that was approved by this Board on October 25th, and it removes specific data points that were provided to this Board when you were asked to approve that notice of default. So as we did before, we provided details and data to refute each of the county's claimed defaults in that November 4th notice of default. I'd like to ask you to accept this into the public record. It's our refutation.
Move to receive.
What is that, what is that noise here?
Yeah, what's the...
That was my microphone on the WebEx.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion.
Move to receive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
In updating our response, we... This is data that you guys already paid for, which actually confirms that we are not in default, and it actually confirms the data we had previously provided. So it's now obvious that the county has no support for its claim that Rad is in default and is asserting its claims in bad faith. The county's bad faith, the bogus and public claims of default are harming our operations, making it more difficult for us to book events, to work with the citizens here, and do what we were supposed to do. So I'm here today to request that the Board of County Commissioners vote to immediately revoke that notice of default. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And did you hand in what you wanted to?
Yep.
All right, and who else is here to speak?
John Tomsoo.
Thank you. John Tomsoo, 26738 Wingdome Drive, West Chapel Florida 33544. So I'm here to reintroduce everybody to the Seven Oaks MPUD. This is the Master Plan Unit Development Map. This has come up before in the past. It's a really awesome document, and it's something that most residents don't look at whenever they move into their homes or become part of the community, but it has a ton of information that's very important to all of the residents. It's basically a map that lays out exactly what is supposed to go where. Everything from multifamily entitlements to single-family homes, commercial entitlements like office and retail. It's very clear, and it has a lot of information that whenever you look at the fine details, basically tells you exactly what's supposed to be there, not only now but in the future, and all of the rules that are applicable to it, from the Florida land use to the comprehensive plan. One of those specific items is the 1,726 total multifamily entitlements that are provided on this map. It also divides it into sections, the southern, the central, and the northern sections. In the south section, which is part of the Seven Oaks CDD, you have 550 total entitlements. Those were consumed already. In a previous engagement, the Board decided that they were going to allow for the rezoning. Rezoning is a little bit different than just regular entitlement exchanges, so that's where the thing called the land use equivalency matrix comes into play, where you allow the conversion between primary and alternate uses. You don't get to just make up new ones. That's where the rezoning comes from. So in previous conversations, sometimes we lack the amount of time in order to explain that fine detail, that even though people talk about past conversions, those were from primary and alternate use. They weren't for introducing a totally new entitlement into the environment. So now, instead of being the standard 555, it's now increased by an additional 320. So now you've introduced a new segment of the population that the area was never zoned for. By increasing that population, you also have a detrimental effect on the CDD non-advalorem taxes. Because the commercial entitlements that are there today have more money coming into that revenue stream, the O&amp;M budget is actually going to decrease for the CDD because of this new change in entitlements. Lastly, I would just ask that the current Board, and obviously the future Board, they give more consideration to the existing community whenever rezoning efforts are presented to the Board, and that they take all of the data and input, not only from the land use attorney, but also from the citizenry to make their decisions, because there's a lot of goodwill from the citizenry behind where they live and the entitlements that they thought that they bought into, rather than some of the changes that sometimes get offered through rezoning, and not just meet the needs of a single landowner or, in this case, one developer's stock development. And then lastly, I just want to thank Commissioners Fitzpatrick and Moore for serving on this Board, and I hope you do well in your futures. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have someone signed up online? Because I'm seeing someone on my screen, so is this a county person or...
Staff.
That is staff person? Okay.
Works in public services.
Okay. So would anyone else like to approach the Board this morning? Okay, and you said we have no one online.
No one's online.
All right, somewhere in here, I think I have a poll sheet.
Resolutions.
Oh yeah, resolutions. I don't know if I go from one to the other. Okay, so we will move on to resolutions, and we have RS1.
RS1 is Brianna...
Somuano. Someone else.
Some...
Someone else.
Somuano.
Yes.
You'll have to forgive me.
Looks like it's that front row right there.
Somuano.
Someone else.
Got it.
There we go.
Very good. All right, I will do my best to speak your name accurately, or pronounce it accurately. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution first. Resolution number 23-030, "A Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida Recognizing Brianna Somuano..." "...for her dedicated effort to inspire others. Whereas Brianna Somuano was born on April 25th, 2000, as a quintuplet..."
Quintuplet.
"Quintuplet, wow, thank you."
What?
"...as a quintuplet, along with siblings Alyssa, Cody, Dante, and Evan, to loving parents and Pasco County residents Kathy and Jack Somuano. The quintuplets were born 27 and a half weeks early, and Brianna faced several health complications shortly after she was born. Anraz, once she was born, Brianna was diagnosed with cerebral palsy, which has impacted her gross motor skills and has led to Brianna using a wheelchair and walker. Anraz, two weeks after she was born, Brianna developed a deadly staph infection and became seriously ill. While fighting the infection, her lungs collapsed and she coded for 30 seconds, requiring life-saving measures. Anraz, since childhood, Brianna has been known for her wisdom. She has always been a source of advice and counsel for her siblings, friends, and family. Anraz, at the age 15, Brianna began hypotherapy, a form of physical, occupational, and speech therapy that uses equine movement to develop and enhance neurological and physical functioning by channeling the gait and movement of a horse. This therapy helped her gain confidence and independence. Anraz Brianna began speaking at fundraising events for the Emerald M Therapeutic Writing Center, where she receives her therapy. Anraz Brianna is currently a motivational speaker and aims to inspire others to overcome the unique challenges they face. Anraz Brianna has since decided to share her journey with others. In 2021, she authored "My Walk and Conversations with God," where she discusses her faith and moments in her life that taught her lessons about God, herself, and her loved ones. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby recognizes Brianna Somuano for her dedicated effort inspiring others. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 15th day of November 2022."
Move her through.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore, your item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi Brianna.
Hi.
So your dad's going to give you the microphone. So this is my last resolution I'm ever doing on the Board of County Commissioners. You're my last one ever. So obviously, we wanted to, not just myself, but everybody wanted to honor you and everything that you've accomplished. Now, I've known the Somuano family for what, 15 years now?
Yeah.
So I've had the opportunity to watch all the quintuplets grow up from what, probably age seven on. But we wanted to recognize you today, Brianna, because just what, again, not only what you've accomplished, you know, in your, in your journey physically, but what you're doing now, and, you know, being a motivational speaker, going out there and encouraging others and letting them know that, hey, you can do anything, right? Anything you want to do. Nothing's going to hold you back. And your book, which is so inspiring, you know, it was sitting with her dad one day, and, and his mom, Jack, and her mom Kathy, and we were talking about people like in different parts of the nation that were reading your book and how inspiring they said it was and how it's inspired them. So you're a blessing, everything you've accomplished. We're so very proud of you, and just, we want you to continue to inspire others. And, you know, her, her book, and I'm going to, I'm going to promote this. This is on television right now, too, you know. "My Walk and Conversations with God" you can find on amazon.com, right? Am I not right? On Amazon, under the book section, but it's a great book to purchase, and we have it. We purchased it ourselves. So Brianna, congratulations to you for everything you've accomplished.
Thank you so much. It's, it's a blessing to be able to receive this award, and I'm honestly so honored to have gotten this opportunity. You know, it's always my greatest joy to be able to inspire my community in any way I can. I feel like that's my main purpose. Sorry if I get emotional.
You're making me emotional.
I feel like that's one of my main purposes in this world, is to just show people that no matter what you go through, you can accomplish anything. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Mike Moore, for giving me the opportunity, and it's been such a blessing to know you and not only you, but just your whole family. You guys are really amazing, and my whole family's really blessed to know you guys, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Brianna.
Well, I don't, I don't know you, but I am so honored to meet you and hear your story this morning, and I'm, I'm very proud that you are a citizen in our county, and wow, just really inspiring. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. It's very inspirational, and I would love to follow you and continue to watch you on your journey.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Moore, thanks for bringing such an awesome individual from us with a great family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. I'm glad I was able to be here and be a part of this and meeting you for the first time. You inspire anyone and everybody in this county that say they can't do something. You know how you hear that all the time from young people? You've proven that they can do what they set their mind to do because of what you've done. So you've inspired a lot of people, and I certainly appreciate it. Mr. Moore, thank you for bringing our forward. My office is open to you. Whenever you need help or direction in this county, I will be out there to help you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
So what we like to do now is we're going to come down. We have a resolution for you to bring home, and some spares for the rest of the family, too. So we're going to, we'll come down, and if, you know, Jack and Kathy and everybody else come up, grandparents, and it's up to you guys.
No, we can go.
Okay.
We can go.
So five flash hits?
Yeah. So I can continue with the story. As you look at the reruns from over a back in the day, the failure was actually in Oakley, Winfrey, with the first quintuplets in Florida or second?
The third.
Third.
First in Tampa.
First in Tampa.
Hey, is someone here?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we're missing two.
Two more, okay.
Yeah.
So we're going to, here, I'm going to put these up here. We're going to take a couple photos, so we're going to hold this for a few more.
So everyone start by looking at Ryan, and then I'll take mine after. Okay, folks right here. Got it, thanks. Perfect. Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
My thinking is, I think it was a great turn today. It was a great turn. It'll be fun to follow you. That's true, I do, very nice. Congratulations. Thank you all. You're welcome.
Oh, next one.
Okay, so I thought we had...
Okay, so I thought we had the Pasco War Resolution, so I'm saying, thank you so much. Very inspiring.
These are, we have one more to read.
But that's out of the window. Where are all the eager scout ones I read on the agenda?
They're not to be read.
Oh.
Oh, right.
Okay. Alright, sorry. I couldn't, I tried to download the agenda in Munich, but it wouldn't download. Okay, so we are gonna move on to the.
We have one more resolution.
Oh, we have one more? Okay. Oh, that's right. RS2, please.
Can Rosemary Sarrakis please come up to the podium? So another feel-good. This is, Rosemary Sarrakis is a supervisor with my office and she has worked tirelessly for both of our offices and basically, she's responsible for making sure everyone has a paycheck.
Oh, well, you can't leave.
Very good. I will go ahead and, and read your resolution. Resolution number 23 dash 021. A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida expressing appreciation to Rosemary Sarrakis Deputy Clerk for the Office of the Clerk and Controller for her 32 years of outstanding service to Pasco County. Whereas Rosemary Sarrakis was hired on February 2nd, 1990 by the Pasco County Clerk of Circuit Court and County Controller as a data entry operator in the Support Services Department. And whereas during her career with the Clerk and Controller, Ms. Sarrakis served as data entry operator, docket clerk, civil records clerk, probate clerk, ex parte clerk, probate specialist, human resources technician, compensation benefit specialist, payroll supervisor, and operations supervisor. And whereas during her time with the Clerk and Controller's office, Ms. Sarrakis initiated, processed, and approved over 45,000 financial records mostly associated with critical journal entries. In the 13 years Rosemary has led the payroll team, she is estimated to have processed or approved over 429 payrolls comprised of over 908,000 individual paychecks and almost 47 million net payroll dollars paid to county and clerk teammates for their services to the citizens of Pasco County. And whereas Ms. Sarrakis's unmatched ability to resolve any and all FRS, 941 tax, W-2, and deferred compensation issues required her to dial those phone numbers, now committed to memory for eternity, and remain on hold for hours, hundreds of hours, while she corrected thousands of timesheet entries and answered inquiries made by teammates and supervisors alike. And whereas Ms. Sarrakis's deep desire to instill positive spirit and camaraderie within her divisions made her a leader in decorating her work areas for every holiday or occasion, dress up as any character and deliver one of the best hors d'oeuvres known to Pasco County, with crackers, of course, making her the queen of cheese balls. And whereas, as you can tell, it's written with love. And whereas Ms. Sarrakis was always willing to take on extra tasks when needed, work through emergencies, storm situations, and a global pandemic, never forsaking her responsibilities as well as sharing her knowledge with her teammates and enduring, endearing her to all. And whereas Ms. Sarrakis's proficiency and knowledge in the performance of her duties had a positive impact on the success of her teammates and the operations of the Clerk and Controller's office and the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas dedication and dependability in the performance of her job duties made her an indispensable teammate to the Office of the Clerk and Controller and partner to the Board of County Commissioners employees. And during her more than 32 years of service, Ms. Sarrakis diligently and conscientiously served the citizens of Pasco County and customers of the Clerk and Controller in her position, ensuring integrity while providing outstanding service. And whereas, as of November 4th, 2022, Ms. Sarrakis retired from the Office of the Clerk and Controller and the Board of County Commissioners and the Clerk of Controller deem it appropriate to recognize her contributions to both the customers of the Clerk and Controller's office and the citizens of Pasco County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida in session duly assembled that said board hereby expresses its deepest appreciation to Rosemary Sarrakis for her more than 32 years of service to the citizens of Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 15th day of November 2022.
Who's this? Oh, a move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, 32 years.
Thank you, thank you Commissioners for issuing this resolution. Rosemary is just not only an amazing leader, but she's an amazing human being. And we are going to miss her terribly in our office. She has been the leader to help train her team, so her team is going to be just fine as she departs our organization because that's who she is. So don't worry, payroll is okay for both the county and the clerk's office. But I just wanted to say, Rosemary, thank you so much for everything you have done. We have, we have moved payroll east side, west side, east side, west side, and it didn't matter, she was just a trooper with that. And with all the changes, with different shifts, and the craziness with Munis coming on, it was, it was an amazing feat and she led it with such grace and kindness. So Rosemary, we're gonna miss you, but thank you so much for all that you have done.
Yes. Yeah, congratulations. Thanks for everything. Especially that you do the paychecks. That excites everybody in this room, doesn't it? But all the best to you and however your future endeavors and thanks for all your excellent work.
Thank you for all that you do for the clerk's office, have done for the clerk's office and there's shoes there that might be big to fill with another person. So hopefully they can find that person and you can train them before you get out of town. But it'd be great that, that you get a time for yourself, so that'd be good.
Thank you for your years of service and commitment to Pasco County and thank you for proactively preparing the next incoming person. Thank you.
Rosemary, good luck. 32 years, a great accomplishment and I'll go have some fun.
Yeah.
She needs to speak.
And, and I, I just wanna say, it's really amazing how many 30-year employees they have on the clerk's office, right? I mean, once you're there, you can't leave. Yeah, must be.
Well, every new clerk has to beg them to stay.
Is there someone, I tried. Mr. Moore, are you saying that there's someone?
No, I didn't know she would have listened.
Yes, would you like to say a few words for Rosemary?
Yeah.
No.
No.
I think she's standing on the side of the microphone.
Your opportunity.
Standing on the side of the mic.
So I'll, right, I'll say, I'll say a few things because we already had a little get-together for Rosemary and in her retirement, she really wants to spend time with her grandson and be able to pick him up from school and take care of him. So I think that's an amazing retirement plan and I think everyone should be just as lucky as you to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, that is awesome.
Mom and dad will give date nights.
Yes, exactly.
Watch the great kids.
I have a book here that your team has signed, so I will go ahead and present that to you along with your resolution. I see your husband and the team, your team in the back. Do you think we could bring everybody up, take a picture?
Sure. How many people are here?
We've got about two rows of people.
Alright, so we'll stand up behind?
Okay.
I'll go down.
You don't wanna stand on it? You can be really high up. Oh my gosh, look how tall he is.
Shit.
I never knew Mr. Murphy was that tall.
There's a lot of things around me that. Yet to come. Move closer over here.
Squeezing it.
Close that up.
Yep, everybody's in. Right here. Perfect, thank you.
Excellent.
I can't get off.
Court could be back in session now because they were all here.
It's fine.
Whatever, whatever side I need to go.
Judges won't know where their clerks are.
Yeah. I need to be able to get the background of the. Thank you. Okay. Now we're on to the agenda. The consent agenda. Okay.
Yes.
I will read to you what I have pulled. I mean, what others have pulled. So we have C19 withdrawn for now, and we'll discuss that later. Brent Wall, C33, withdraw. Branford Aduma, change order withdrawn, that's C48. David Allen, C61, withdraw. Nikki Alvarez-Souls has, has pulled C21 for pull and discuss. Also 45, 46, and 47.
Thank you.
Alright, board members, anything else to be taken off the consent agenda?
Remove approval, review the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, on, on C19, I just, I've been out of the country and I.
Withdrawn.
I, yeah, I wanna talk to y'all about this more at another time.
I understand, but it's withdrawn.
Okay, so that's why I withdrew. C33 is withdrawn, 48 withdrawn, 61 withdrawn. Nikki, it's yours.
Oh, right.
C21.
So all of them, I can do.
You wanna take a motion on the consent agenda?
You already did.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, you're with me. Okay, C21.
For, for all of them, so C21, C45, C46, and C47. Some of the items we received just this morning, some of the items we haven't received yet. So if the board does want to approve it, if you could approve it subject to clerk review, that's the only request I have on those items.
You guys good with that?
21, 45, 46, 47.
Yes, so there are different items, but the issue for all of them is the same, which is either we just got it today, the, the documents, or we haven't received it. For instance, C21, I don't believe we've received anything yet.
Well, how, how's that happening?
So is a motion to allow Nikki to make the approval?
To my, to my office to review the items.
It's, it would be approval of whichever item it is subject to clerk, clerk and controller review.
And I think the hurricane or tropical storm probably had an issue with getting the documents to us in time.
Okay.
So a motion to allow clerk and compto, clerk and controller to review?
No. Move approval of C21, subject to clerk and controller approval.
Are all of these just looking, looking over the numbers?
So it's making sure, some of it has been filed electronically. We wanna make sure the documents received for signature is the same. Some have not been filed at all, so we wanna make sure that it is the appropriate document before we upload it into the official record with signatures. And if there is an issue, we will bring it back.
Second. Second.
Okay, 'cause some of these are really big numbers, so. Okay, but you're good with that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we'll get those.
Then you'll need, I just did, these are each individual items, so they have to be.
Alright.
So the next motion would be.
Then we'll do C45.
Move approval of C, of item C44, 45, subject to clerk and controller approval.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same for C46?
Move approval.
Move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
C47?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we are on to. See regular items, then we'll take up the first one, which is. Hey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as the board is aware, we took over control of the Pasco County Detention Center in October of this year. And as such, in order to alleviate the span of control as well as just numerous personnel administrative issues, we have, we've determined that the need for a public safety branch is necessary. And so as such, with the public safety branch, we would need an assistant county administrator to administer the programs under the, under, under that branch. And so over the past couple of months, we conducted a national search. Our human resources department vetted our candidates and we, we had a quite, a quite large pool of qualified candidates. And we ended up narrowing it down to about four finalists and those, those finalists, of course, met with myself, various members of the team, department directors, as well as stakeholders in the various, in the various departments. I am happy to propose to you, requesting confirmation of Mr. John J. Murphy, to be our next assistant county administrator for public infrastructure. I'm sorry, for public, public safety, excuse me. He has decades of military and local government experience, including a balanced public service, public safety administrative portfolio. More importantly, he shares our leadership philosophy here at the county and I have a lot of confidence in his ability to, to do great things with this new public safety branch that we are bringing back. He's also a, holds a Masters of Public Administration with a concentration in criminal justice from Marywood University. And he is a credentialed ICMA manager and also serves on ICMA's Veterans Advisory Board. With that, I present to you Mr. John J. Murphy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Pasco County. You went from one coast to the other, I think.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Although it's much colder over in California this week. Southern California's in a little chill this week.
Oh.
It's a, an honor to be here. Yes, it was a very thorough search and I got to meet a lot of the staff. I think there was probably over 25 that were part of the process. So I'm honored to be selected and join this team and, and help move the county forward, especially as you're taking over a brand-new jail operation that's critical. And public safety's important and I've met at least a half a dozen of the fire department leadership team and looking forward to working with them as well.
Well, we're, we're, wanna welcome you and board members, any words?
Let's see, move approval.
Yeah? I, I should've picked you up from the green tie with the last name of Murphy, right?
I should've started with, I have five daughters. So that's why the gray hairs are kicking in.
You'll just, you'll learn we do things a little bit different here than California.
Yeah.
I'm not originally from, I'm, I'm from the East Coast.
I'm just having.
Born and raised in Philadelphia, so.
I'm just having fun with you.
Our sheriff is from Philadelphia.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, that's good.
You can share that, okay. Alright, so I think I had a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Well, welcome. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, next one. I don't have my laptop, my iPad with my.
R87, Madam Chair, Confirmation of Building Construction Services Director.
Thank you. Because they don't print it out in order in my book.
Good morning Commissioner Sally Sherman, Assistant County Administrator for Development Services. I bring to you this morning the confirmation for another Mr. Murphy and to our knowledge, they're not related. This is Mr. Joseph P. Murphy, goes by JJ, and then he goes by JP, so we're gonna.
JP.
JP, JJ. See, I'm already, but it's an honor.
Sounds like a law firm, Murphy.
It's an honor to bring forward, for confirmation, Mr. Murphy. He is a very astute individual with a very productive background in local government services. He has a master's degree in public administration and there was a correction because we had it in education. I apologize for that. It's been corrected and Mr. Murphy is looking to start on November 29th. We're excited about him being on his team, serving as the BCS Director of Administration that's really dealing with things that we work with on a detailed basis with regard to budgets, grant agreements, contracts, et cetera. So we're excited to present to you Mr. Murphy.
Welcome. Do you wanna address the board?
Sure, I'd just like to thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for your consideration today. I'm, I'm a local boy, so I'm from Florida and so you don't have to worry about cross-politics. But I did receive my Master of Public Administration here at USF and never sort of left the greater Tampa Bay area. I have over 17 years of public administration experience. Last five of those most recent years as chief executive of a small municipality in Pinellas County, so. Sort of, what's that?
Which one?
Bel Air.
Bel Air, okay.
Yeah, so I'm very excited to kind of join the county and, and work on your explosive growth when it kind of being built out in Pinellas County. There's a lot of great opportunities here in Pasco and I think that's, that's very exciting. So thank you today for your consideration.
Thank you and welcome to a very fast-growing county.
Oh, second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, welcome.
I'll need your cellphone.
I look forward to working with you for another six hours.
You're lucky.
Okay, we are done with the regular agenda, and we're going to move to Commissioners' items.
Oh, yeah, that's quick.
Told you, I run a fast meeting, even start five minutes late.
You run a fast meeting. You're a little late.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd like to thank staff on job well done for Hurricane Ian, or, what's his last...
Nicole.
Nicole.
Nicole. Because Andy Fossa and his team and the staff that we use in the county to work us through that, the outcome was great, even more so because the storm wasn't near as bad as we had predicted, but we were prepared to take care of it. And I want to thank all of staff for doing that, because certainly appreciate their hard work and, and making things happen the right way. So we were prepared, even though it didn't come as bad. Next, I'd like to report on the following law enforcement officers memorial groundbreaking ceremony, which was October 27th at 10 o'clock here at the courthouse in the northwest corner of the courthouse property here, is where that new facility or memorial will go.
Yes, sir.
I'm being it.
So this is what it's going to look like. They've worked on this for about nine or 10 years, Craig Lepore and the law enforcement benefit, memorial benefit foundation, that was Tim Henigan, Craig Lepore, Skip Stone, Jeff Gray, Tim Marshall, Scott Humphrey. They led this for like nine years and needed a little push to get us over that finish line to have the money to supply this, so I've been over to, myself and Randy Blankenship had gone over to Polk County and saw, met with Grady Judd, and on the way in, we saw his memorial that they were having. And the fact of it is, it was just astounding how beautiful it was, and I looked back and we were looking at each other and said, why don't we have ours done? Because they've announced it a couple of years before, but we still couldn't get there, couldn't get it, that groundbreaking, and now we got to that point. But the following people helped raise $100,000 toward this event and, and making this happen. Those people, Randy and Shannon Blankenship, Alex Deeb, Tom Dobies, Sean Foster, Pat Gasaway, Jim Gidry, Larry Guilford, Randy Maggerton family, myself, Pete Peterson, Scott Sheridan, Wilton Simpson, Joel Two, Mike Wells Jr., Barbara Willhite, Waste Aid Systems, and Pasco Off, Office Park LLC, PCS Civil, and Devoted Creations, all put together monies to make us cross that finish line of gaining another $100,000 toward that, and now it's going to happen. So we look forward to it coming to the property here, and hopefully it'll start very soon. We've, we'll make sure we're getting all the parts, all the material we need to carry it through before we actually break that ground and leave it messed up for, through the season. So that should happen in the near future.
Very nice.
Okay? But that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My last miscellaneous business ever, but I have some things I'd like to say, but I'm going to wait till the end of the day, if that's okay. Just a couple of cool things. Land O' Lakes Library reopening. It was yesterday, Land O' Lakes Library reopened after being renovated, so I want to obviously thank the citizens of Pasco County for approving our GO bonds to actually, to help make that happen, and our entire library team. It's a, it's a great, great library, and I'm sure the citizens are excited for it to be reopened over there in that square.
That was due.
Yes, yes. So that's exciting. I do have a photo. Talk about tourism a little bit. I'll wait for that to be, there we go. So what you're looking at here is something really cool from our tourism DMO, Florida Sports Coast. They work with a television host, Gueramo Lockhart from Uruguay, came here to film a Halloween special in downtown Date City. They aired on Channel 12 in Uruguay, and they actually aired on Halloween. So they filmed plenty of sports and things around Date City, but one of the big things they, they did was focused a lot on screaming gaddin' in the cemeteries and the historic courthouse. So they talked about the ghost tours that are going on in Date City, because you know, we're very, very haunted here, if you didn't know that. If you guys ever heard the things in the rafters up here? I'm just teasing. But it's, it's a long segment and in Spanish, and included all kinds of neat stuff. So Andy has that link, or the tourism office has it, they can send it to you if you'd like to actually see the, the full thing. But it's really, what's really cool about it is that, you know, we think about tourism in Florida Sports Coast and the reach that we have now. You know, we have people from TV stations from Uruguay coming all the way over to, you know, not just the United States, but good old Pasco County, and filming pieces just like this. I want to, hey Kathy, can you come here real quick? Do you mind? Thanks. Andy, will you tell, I need Terry up here real quick, too. I texted her, but I didn't know we were moving so fast today with miscellaneous business. So I, I do want to...
Andy.
Oh, there she is, okay. Cool, no, just sit down. If you don't mind, thanks. I didn't know miscellaneous business was coming this fast, so. But wait, wait, Terry, wait, Andy, wait. Go sit, have, if you don't mind, just have a seat for one second. But one of the things that...
This is different.
Well, I know, it's going to be different. It's going to be different.
Things are changing.
We're changing the way we do things. No, but one of the things, you know, as, just for the citizen's knowledge, when we are elected and we have campaign accounts, we're able to roll money over until we use it as an office account. And one of the great things about the office account is that, you know, we, we do things with it, so with our old campaign money, under the law, you know, we're allowed to roll up to like $20,000, and we use it for incidentals, and we use it for, you know, a number of different things, instead of having to use the taxpayer dollars, right? So, but sometimes we have some left over. So I've got a couple, they're not big checks, but I have a couple, I'll just, I won't come down, but I'll let, I'll let you come up here. So I do have two for you. I have one for, whoop, wrong one, that's for somebody else. I have one for Parks and Recreation for $500, I'm going to give to you. And if I would just ask, you know, if you could use it for these inclusive playgrounds that you're doing coming up and donate towards that, if you would. And I have another one, you know, I have a, obviously a special place in my heart for animal services, and I continue and always will. So I have another $500 check you can give to animal services to help offset some of the cost to our fellow taxpayers. So I'll let you come get those.
I will. Can I say something?
Just say thank you. Commissioner Moore, Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator, Public Services. I'm all choked up, I really am. You know how I feel, I'm going to miss you terribly.
Oh, you're sweet.
And I wish you nothing but success in your future, too. You've been a great commissioner. We've had our days when we fought, and we had our days when we supported each other, but the next day, we were always on the same page, so I thank you for that.
Oh, thank you, Kathy, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me say that.
No, you, so here you go. And I, I don't know where this needs to go after, maybe I have to go right, I have to go right back to the clerk, I don't know. So if I could, I'm going to have, if I have Andy and Terry come up for a second, so. There's no script here, yes, yes. I, I, for some reason, I thought miscellaneous would have been in the afternoon, I thought we were busier this morning, but, you know, you know, it, it takes a great team to be successful in what we do, right? We don't, we don't do it on our own. And I was, Terry has been with me for seven years, maybe go over seven years now, right? Pretty much since the beginning, you know? And just, you know, I'll get choked up myself talking about this, but just an incredible person that's, that's assisted me and the citizens of Pasco County as well, you know, for these seven and a half years. And again, I, you know, wouldn't have been able to do this without you, so I thank you so, so very much for everything you've done for me and the citizens throughout, throughout the years. And I do have something I would like to give you, if you don't mind, I'm going to come down for a second here. And then actually, I'll have Andy step up, too, and if you don't mind, too. Same thing with Andy, and it's been, what, over three years now?
Almost four.
Almost four. You know, and when we came on, when I came on, it's almost four, I don't know.
He can remember.
I'm losing track. I'm losing track. But, you know, one of the things we didn't have when we, I came on the commission, were legislative aides, and, you know, people, we had like two secretaries at one time, and then, you know, I brought Terry on, and we have executive assistants, we brought on legislative aides. I think, you know, having executive assistants and legislative aides, both, it proves, you know, the worth. Again, not just for, to assist the commissioners, but what we're able to do with staff and with, and with the citizens, and that's what matters most. So Andy, you know, obviously you've been a joy, you've been a, you know, you've been with me, you know, tied to my hip for, for these last four years, so I appreciate, again, everything you've done.
Twins.
What?
Twins.
Through the years. So I do have, I do have something I want to present both of you right now, and these state, just for the public record here. This one says, presented to Andy Taylor for your outstanding service to Commissioner Mike Moore and the citizens of Pasco County. And of the like, this one for Terry.
Look at this.
Does say that presented to Terry Ewing Chow for your outstanding service to Commissioner Mike Moore and the citizens of Pasco County. So I'd like to come down and present these to both of you.
Wow.
This really, you know, I've scripted his miscellaneous business for the last three and a half years, this really wasn't in the script, he did it on.
Those are really nice.
I'll give you guys some glasses.
Do you want us to stand behind or? Or get out of the way?
Congratulations, guys.
Yep, that was famous. Are you done?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, your last commissioner.
But I did want to give an update on the all-inclusive playground, especially you mentioned it.
The equipment should be coming in on December 21st, and it should be completed within three weeks of the equipment coming in, so I'm very excited to watch that be completed.
And is that Lake Lisa?
Yes, and I have the photos here, but I did not send those ones.
Okay.
So that was for the all-inclusive playground. Also, I would just like to mention Pine Hill. I know back on February 20, February 22nd of this year, the land swap was finalized. So it was very exciting to see that. I just want to confirm.
Is, is there something going on with the screen?
That's... So with the Pine Hill, they just completed the field renovations, which is very exciting. And then, of course, after going to the softball fields at Starkey, they are beautiful, and as we're setting that premier standard, and you're, we're having kids go from Pine Hill to Starkey Softball Fields and back to Pine Hill. So as we set that premier standard, it's very important that we have that premier standard throughout the entire county. So we had the funding from the GO bond to update the bathrooms and the concession. But now going, as setting that premier standard, it went out for design and construction, so in the next six, eight months, it, it's going through the design process for the bathrooms, the concession, the bleachers, the dugout, and all of the fencing. And fencing was very important to get completed because it also was a safety factor at that point. So I'm very excited to see all of that completed next year as well.
I feel bad for you, pictures.
So next, I did attend the New Port Ritchie Rotary Veterans Luncheon that they host annually. I did have the honor for Jeff Brockman with Pasco County, that's in Pasco Safety, to come to the event. And I would also like to say thank you to Mike Carbala and all of our veterans that work for Pasco County, and thank you to all veterans in Pasco County for serving our, for our country. And if I can ask Branford to come on up? Please. I know we started discussing something the other day, I wasn't sure if that was ready yet.
Good morning, Commissioners. Branford Aduma, interim Assistant County Administrator. Yes, I'm trying to refresh my memory.
You had said the list of roads that were sent, there was an additional roads that were sent out for fire rescue, and they deemed them impassable?
Yes, there were five of them, which I did email them to you last night, yes. And I copied, taught on that, too.
So there were additional five roads that were deemed impassable, that were looking for a one-time fix? And just to confirm, these were all public roads?
Yes.
No private roads?
Yes, and I think I emailed them two days ago, not last night, yes.
I see that. Monday, thank you. So it was Evergreen Street, Nadia Avenue, Napier, Olson, and Ryland. They range from $7,000 to $20,000, so it was a total of $48,000. And I believe you said there was funding for that, because they are public roads?
Yeah, so the, the way we handle one-time fixes is we take the funding from our budget, budget that has been approved by the Commission. We don't have a budget every year for one-time fixes. So, you know, the work is usually done in-house, so the equipment are there and the labor is there, so that is how we do it.
Okay, so I was wondering, I would like to make a motion for a one-time fix on these five roads.
But we can't. Is that, are they going to go up there?
I don't know if I have the photos on these ones. Evergreen Street is an unpaved dirt road.
Yes. They've been deemed impassable by fire rescue?
Yes, we sent them to fire and rescue, they drove on the roads, and all five were deemed impassable. There were some because of the condition of the road, and also because of the trees were on the road, which will require tree trimming and regrading. But yes, the fire and rescue did...
I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
I recommend you...
Yeah, we need to fix that.
It was as requested, five Moon Lake Roads publicly dedicated and not been accepted, but were evaluated by fire and rescue and determined impassable by fire and rescue, so. Thank you.
Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I was just going to clarify, so yeah, I, I found the email. We're, we're speaking of Evergreen Street, Nadia Avenue, Napier Street, Olson Street, and Ryland Avenue, all of which are publicly owned, public, publicly dedicated roads that are not currently under, under maintenance, and so we would, we would ask for the one-time fix in order to make them passable. Total estimated cost using in-house resources is up to $48,000.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Yes, there's a second, or a second over there.
Yep. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. And then we have, I attended the Gulf Coast Street, Safe Street Summit, and I found it very informative, and my takeaway from that event was their pledge to slow down. And I thought it was great because they are willing to put our county logo on it, and I have spoken with Sheriff Naco as well, and to see if they would be interested, and then also, I would still have to reach out, I believe it's Steve with this, our Florida State Troopers.
To do what?
To move forward with the pledge, so should I jump to that or go on these pictures?
Oh, you, right here?
So right here, at the Safe Street Summit, they actually had pledged to slow down yard signs, and I had taken two of them, I put them out at Calusa, because that's, of course, close to where I live. And I think it was very informative, because I would love to see, as I men... And I think it was very informative, because I would love to see, as I mentioned last year at the MPO meeting, Vision Zero. I think Vision Zero is extremely important, because one life is worth saving, and if we can, I know Vision Zero seems impossible, but every day, if we can strive to have one less accident, and we could save a life, so I would like to still work on, work towards Vision Zero. I don't know if many know, but my sister did pass in a car auto accident on 19. So, of course, I would like to promote that. And can we click on their website? Because their website has about five PSAs, but there's one PSA specifically that was the most impactful to myself. And then Desiree, were you able to get that email with the link? Thank you. And it's the someone's loved one, it's the third one down. Thank you.
Hello, we're going to license the fine train, are they?
This is my mama. This is my husband. This is my mom. Everyone, that's a stop line. Then she's slow down and drive safely.
And I was going to bring this up at the MPO meeting, but we did not have it. So I think it's really important if we can work together, because I know it was going to be a regional project, and then it kind of just went to Polk County, but I would like to try to encourage us to go on board with the pledge to slow down. I also spoke with Sheriff Naco with the traffic citation and team, and it's obviously very, it's very difficult, because we have so many 911 calls. And, but if we could, if he can't work directly towards traffic, and we, of course, we have the Florida Highway Patrol that works on our traffic citation team. If we can start helping and giving additional resources, if he can't specifically get to that specific objective, then if the county can work on helping slow down traffic, and which would reduce accidents, because by having everyone slow down and increase our safe streets, then there's going to be less 911 calls, which is going to be less ambulance, less accidents, less 911 calls, less ambulances, and it's just going to reduce expenses everywhere. And then also, he's focusing on a lot of homeless and mental health concerns, and I find it, if the county can help add another layer to our mental health unit, or if Pasco County can have a MR team, a mobile response team, because instead of everyone having to call 911 for someone to come out to address the mental health and have them, and then the mobile response team from Bay Care comes out within 30 minutes, why not help alleviate some of, some of his load, and then us step in and create a mental health unit and a mobile response team? So that's just something that's been brought up. Okay, and then my last is a presentation that I've actually been working on for probably 10 years. So, we're going to go run through it pretty quickly, and I would like to say thank you to Dr. Bellis, because he had helped me work on this project, get it out of my head, put it on paper, and it does work, because I've seen it work on someone, so, thank you. The objective is to promote healthy babies and improve the quality of life for families. The next slide. We want to promote healthy families and promote healthy babies for babies that are born at risk of exposure. I want to be able to treat the addiction, support the mental health, and then reduce homeless. So there would be four phases. We would be targeting the woman that is addicted or prescribed medication due to other medical needs. And why do we need this? Because there really is no continuum of care for the prevention and treatment of opioid addiction while pregnancy. And we want to, of course, improve the quality of life for children, and wean the women off the medication when possible, and then the benefit is to reduce the number of babies born substance exposed. We're improving the quality of life for families, proactively preventing and ultimately breaking the cycle that results in homelessness, addiction, and mental health. If we invest now, the cost of saving will reduce the cost of neonatal care and extended healthcare costs. Back several years ago, it was one in three babies were born substance exposed. I had heard one of our chiefs mention, there were six or seven out of 10 babies born substance exposed in Tarpon Hospital. So those are very high numbers. And, okay, so when we're comparing healthy infants, if you have a neonatal abstinence syndrome baby, which is a NOS or an SEN, substance exposed newborn. A regular pregnancy costs about $6,000 to $8,000, back when I originally did the study. A neonatal abstinence syndrome baby can cost an additional $50,000 for that year. Babies can stay in the hospital for an average of 23 days currently, but I've heard they've been in the hospital all the way up to 180 days. And if we move to the next slide, oh, and about 84% of these babies born substance exposed are on Medicaid. So if we can start working, if we can start working on redirecting funds now, let's invest that $50,000 during their pregnancy, and then maybe they won't be born substance exposed, maybe they won't be born with a disability. If you're looking, so they won't have to do physical therapy, speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, maybe they won't need all the additional services in schools, maybe they won't need additional IEPs, and the McKay scholarships can go up to $24,000. So that's about $300,000 of additional care in the public school system, in addition to the physical therapy and the speech and language and the OT. In addition, let's just say the supplemental security income for a child that has special needs, so let's average it out to $1,000 a month. Well, $1,000 a month times 12 is $12,000 a year, multiplied by 70 years is $840,000, plus the $300,000 for school, plus all the additional funds that we have to spend in addition to the quality of life of that child. And then, of course, it has additional cost of homelessness, law enforcement, trespass, arrests, and I'm going to, if I say this correctly, Dr. Bellis, there is a cardboard sign project, and it actually proves that it's cheaper to, and less expensive, to house someone instead of having them be homeless. And so not paying attention to this is costing the taxpayers additional funds. So if we can go to the next slide. There's four phases, there's medical, education, transition, and self-sufficiency, and we can go to the next slide. Of course, we want a woman that is dependent on the system to be independent and have self-stability and become a productive member of society. So phase one would be a pregnancy center, an opioid, where we would be able to wean mothers off the opioids. They do have level-two ultrasounds, which can monitor all the vital organs for that baby, and then, of course, they have the belly bands that monitor the heartbeat and the contractions. And of course, we would have to pull in a, we would request a medical provider to help oversee that phase. The next phase. At this phase, during their pregnancy, and then during this phase, we would request Pasco Kids First to come involved. They do have programs such as Healthy Families that teach parenting skills and life skills, which can reduce shaken baby syndrome. We have Healthy Start that can provide medical referrals and provide counseling services. And then, of course, every suite in this facility would have their own bed, whether it's an apartment or duplex or wherever the facility is, they would have their own bed and crib, which would reduce co-sleeping. Phase three, once they graduate from phase two, because Healthy Families is a program that they can start during their pregnancy, all the way up to April prior to being school age, once they graduate that program, they can go into a program that Housing Authority actually oversees a program, I think there's Sunnydale and another facility, that they can go there for two years, and then they learn how to take care of their own home. And every month, there's money that's put aside, so after two years, they can use it as a down payment for their own home. And of course, we have Healthy Start, working with the wraparound care and giving referrals if still needed. Healthy Families, they're just graduating from there, the Housing Authority's their two-year program, and then once they graduate from phase three with the Housing Authority, they would go into their own home. Of course, it'd be great to have a pool and swimming lessons here, because drowning is leading cause of death for children under the age of five in Florida, and then a preschool facility, so parents can take the necessary classes that they need. Phase four, of course, you have the continued counseling, the Housing Authority, this would, phase four would be their own home, so that would be a house. They are now in elementary school, and it'd be imperative for them to be able to have mentorship programs. Of course, we would ask the Housing Authority, the schools, law enforcement, and mentorship programs to be involved in this wraparound care. And the next. So we would want to reduce the babies born substance exposed by 5% annually, reduce the top three causes of infant deaths, which are co-sleeping, shaken baby syndrome, and drowning, which are the top three leading causes of deaths for infants. We want to reduce the number of children placed in dependency system by 5% annually, and of course, reduce each of these categories by 5%. Next slide. I did take away the critical partners, I do have a very long list of who would be a critical partner, of course, we can have the county, law enforcement, schools, and everyone else. I have been speaking to many, and presenting this presentation to many others. And next slide. So what we could use for resources, there is the opioid task force, there is legislative funds, there's CDBG funds, there is health insurance, Medicaid, private pay, private donations, and endowments. Next slide. And of course, here's some additional resources, and the next slide. And some other models to follow up and investigate would be the Children's Board of Hillsborough County, because even if there was, if everyone paid $1 or $3 a year, that would help, if we had a break-even analysis, if we paid $1 to $3 per household, or that would only bring in about $3 million a year, but what you can do with that $3 million is pull down matching grants, which would be a lot, would cost, which would be a lot more funds to Pasco County to help with these, with these programs, and that by having this program, we would break the cycle of homelessness, addiction, and mental health, and then we would be reducing the cost that, and all these extra resources that are put on the burden of law enforcement and the schools by breaking the cycle, so children can be born into a better quality of life and not born substance exposed. Thank you. And that's it.
Wow, that's a lot of work.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, we had a meeting at the Tampa Regional Planning Council, had a good presentation on living seawalls. I'll eventually bring that person forward to do a presentation when they're going to be back in town again. We set up our conference this year for resiliency, it's going to be May 4 and 5, and I think when you look at the results of these last two hurricanes that we just had, and collapsed at exposure to maybe stuff that could have been prevented, it's going to be something that could be very beneficial for us all. CJ Reynolds, who was actually heading up this conference again this year, just got appointed with Florida's Resiliency Coalition, so she's going to be looking up and down the state, both sides, to find out what damages has happened, what things can look at that I think could be beneficial for us. And I've talked to Administrator Mike, and he said he's going to probably try to make it to that event, which I think will be good for the administrator to sit down. And David Allen, I didn't talk with you before the meeting, but we did talk before about Newport Ritchie and the discharge. Could you come up so we can talk about that just for a minute? Now that we have time, I didn't know if we have time today, but since we do, it's an important issue. Would you talk about the discharge that's going on right now that's been permitted, and what they're looking to do to increase discharge, and we'll go further from there?
So the City of Newport Ritchie has a NPDS permit for their wastewater treatment facility. They are authorized for three different discharge locations. Two of those are related to reuse operations, or reclaimed water operations, so one is with their system, the second one is to our reclaimed water system, the third one is to the Gulf under wet weather emergency circumstances. And so that permit is currently under review by FDP, FD, EP, for renewal, and they are essentially requesting similar provisions what's under their current permit, which allows wet weather discharges when the capacity of the plant exceeds, I believe it's 8 million gallons a day. And looking back at the last three years of records, they had one incident where they did discharge, and it was back in 2021. I believe there was a problem either with the inflows to the plant or the plant itself, and that's where they were discharging to the Gulf. But other than that, within the last three years, they have not had any discharges to the Gulf.
So I want to make sure we, before this permit gets issued, that we actually take a look at it, find out what things we can do to help prevent this going on. I mean, they're approving coastal development going out there, and if they don't have the capacity to take care of what they got now, I don't want it to get worse, so I just want to keep the board informed that as this comes forward, it's something we want to take a look at. Because we've had residents from out there complaining about the smell of the discharge that recently happened, and they wondered what was going on, so now that we got this permit that's coming up, I want us to take a close look at every step of the way. Okay? And I want to say, I missed, my wife and I were away for our 31st anniversary last, the previous week, and a couple of things we missed, the overpass ribbon cutting, which is phenomenal for the county, and the other was a ribbon cutting for Tunnel to Towers over in Land O' Lakes. On the TV show Sean Hannity a few nights ago, they actually did a big highlight vote, the project itself.
Really? That's amazing.
And being, Land O' Lakes being the host in Pasco County of this event, so I'm going to try to do something, Commissioner, I'd love to work with you on it, and I know anyone else would like to jump in, try to do like a little more of a fundraiser for them, get them a little more awareness, and try to help that project take its next big step. I think December 14th or so is when the next ribbon cutting is going to be out there, and I'm going to try to make it for like the day before that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And Madam Chair?
Yep.
They did just have their 5K race just a few weeks ago here in Pasco.
Okay, the County Administrator?
Actually, I have two, two items, if I may, actually, and really, it's on behalf of Pasco County's 3,700 employees. I'd first like to, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, recognize that the impact you've made here in the county in the past, the past two years, you have brought a passion for education and advocacy, as well as inclusion in this organization, and we want to thank you for that. You've served on several boards, including the Area Agency on Aging, Pasco Pinellas, Board for the Alliance of Substance Abuse Prevention, Substance Exposed Newborn Committee, and your hard work and dedication to Pasco is much appreciated, so I just want to say thank you on behalf of our entire team. We just have a, just a small token of appreciation, if you wouldn't mind coming down. If I could ask the Assistant County Administrator to come up as well?
Thank you.
And Jeff, can we just pose for a quick photo, if that's okay with you?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Stand.
Stand.
Take it in.
Forget Dallas.
One, two, three, one, one. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it for you?
Yeah, that's it. No, I'm kidding, actually. We, I'd be remiss if I didn't, if we didn't mention Commissioner Mike Moore, and really, I'll just focus some quick remarks on my experience with Commissioner Moore through the years. I think we probably both worked at the county about the same time, and I always knew when the phone rang for Commissioner Moore, he always, "Mike, I never bother you." I'm like, "Yes, sir, what's going on?" And we worked extensively together through a lot of infrastructure issues, more through my time as an Assistant County Administrator, Fox Ridge, MSBU trim, and a lot of those things come to mind over the years, there's some issues that we work through. But you've really been a champion for infrastructure projects. put together, Old Pasco Road, and really, just, you know, and a number of stormwater and flooding improvements. So, I just say personally, it's been a pleasure working with you, and again, I know on behalf of the entire team, it's been fantastic. But, you know, just as you've worked on all the infrastructure and roads, we just wish you the best on your future roads, wherever they take you. And again, we just have a small token of just our appreciation of that, if you would mind coming down, posing as well. Thank you, sir.
All right. Y'all should move the drill. Everybody look at Ryan.
Everybody look at Ryan first, and then I'll take one.
Thank you.
All right.
Her, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a? I do. Okay, we're onto the county attorney.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I've been notified that there is another settlement in the National Opioid Settlement. This one involves Walmart, and according to the email that I received, the proposed settlement comprises of $215 million in cash and dispensing 672 Noxalon kits for first responders, and would seek the board's authorization for me to sign the settlement documents that have been tendered by outside counsel.
Wait, did you say how much we get?
No, I just told you what everybody in Florida got. They didn't give me a break, I haven't seen a breakdown yet of what we get.
Well, that's not the country, that's Florida?
That's, what it says is to combat the opioid crisis in Florida. So, I think that's Florida's portion.
And is that based on our statistics, as we're one in the top three counties in the state?
Yeah, it should be good for us, sadly.
So, motion to approve.
I'll take a second on that.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, you can sign that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder, can you maybe give us an update as far as, have we got any money coming in? I was talking to Kathy Pearson this past week, and I don't think we've got any money yet, and I'm just wondering what the status is, because, you know, with Commissioner Fitzpatrick's presentation, we've talked about putting a building in to deal with mental health and opioid deduction, but I would like to see the opioid task force actually take that topic up, but...
No, I think they are, I think, and I think, I don't know if Florida wants to talk about that now.
But it's, but I want to know, if the money's not there, then so be it, but is the money going to be released? Are we better off working, partnering with the state?
So, the email that I received on November 10th was that the Big Three Distributor Settlement, which was Janssen, Teva, Allergen, would be hitting our online accounts in the next seven to 10 days. So, by the end of November, we should be seeing the first amount of money that, of those settlements.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And is that an annual, it's an annual distribution, that one, I think?
Yeah, the, the, all of the settlements so far have been, have been calculated to be over a, I think it's an 18-year period that, that we will be getting yearly distributions for.
All right, well, we'll have a future discussions on all that, actually. Okay, anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Clerk?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank both of the commissioners for their service. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, thank you for your service. I don't believe that a county commissioner's role is easy role, and the last two years, you've done that role well, and I appreciate you focusing on social services. And Commissioner Moore, you have been, I feel like, a fierce champion of Pasco. The many years you have been on this board, I am sad to see you leave. I think you have done an amazing job and had a great impact. A lot of the things that you have been on the forefront on, my family and I get to have and experience, from making, helping make it the Sports Coast, which I love, and we take part in many of those things that the county has developed, and to the traffic, to putting a hold on apartments till we get our feet on the ground about that. These are not easy topics, and you have just done a stellar job as a commissioner, looking out for the interest of Pasco, so thank you for your service.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so we have 11:30, but I'm going to do my commishad so we can get all that done, and I'll be quick, okay, Mr. Carmella? I have some photos, and skip the fence one. There's one about driveways, do you have those?
I've got these.
Yeah. I, and Commissioner Oakley, this may, this may look familiar to you, but I was driving through, you know, when I go through, I drive through the county neighborhoods all the time, and I was driving through one in my district late in the day, and some people were home, and this is what I saw, and I thought, I mean, that's, the kids were riding their scooters in the street because they cannot use the sidewalks. So, there should be three photos in that. Look at that, look at the way that guy's parking.
Yeah, same in my neighborhood.
Yeah, and then there's another one, the whole, if you look, the whole...
That's it.
That's a trail now, that's not the sidewalk. The whole thing is blocked. So, I think we really need to be looking at these, and, and making sure that, that this doesn't happen. And I've talked with some developers already about solutions for this, but this is something that we need to get a hold of because we're going to have kids, children get hurt.
I think this happens often in 40-foot lots and 50-foot lots, subdivisions.
Well, part of it is the driveway length?
Anything that you have a garage setback that's 20 feet or less...
Yes.
You're going to, you're going to see.
Yeah, so, and, and here's what's going to happen with this, is it's not the county that enforces this. My understanding is, first, it's the HOA. So, if the HOA's not doing it, not doing their job...
Don't have an HOA.
Then, then we have to step in, but I guarantee you, one of those cars is going to pull out and not see a little one riding her little scooter or try, because she can't ride on the tra, you know, safely in her neighborhood. So, I'm not okay with this, and we need to address this, in my opinion, pretty quickly. I don't know why the street name is on the ground, but, okay, so, next photo.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Just to tie on that too, as Commissioner Oakley said, he's seen it as well, and you say the 40-foot, 40-foot lots, same, same thing. We allow narrow streets, smaller setbacks, and even on the sides of houses, you know, where you can't, let's say, if you want to put a propane tank in and you get air conditions, issues.
Yeah.
Staff is struggling with all this stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I think it's time to do a workshop on this, because what we don't want to do is build homes like this where the kids can't go on a sidewalk, they got to go on a street. It's just, it's dangerous, it looks lousy, and it's just not good for the long-term growth of this county. We need to pick what we want. Do we want to be a high-level premier county, or do we want to allow that, stuff like that? And I think it's time to look at it.
Yeah, we have to get rid of this.
And I'm also hearing that, and I, I don't want to take Commissioner Moore's time here, so we'll bring this back, but if, if the utilities needs a whole 10 feet, then they can't put any trees, so I don't understand why they need 10 feet, but I'm not going to solve that and discuss that here, I don't know why they can't get that done in five feet. But, okay, the next thing you're going to see is what, what, what was, one of the discussions that we had that, well, if we, if they put these in their garage, I mean, they can use the garage as a parking spot, but until, until people start using their garages, we can't, we can't count those as parking spots, in my opinion. They're, they're just storage rooms. All right, next photo. Oh, that was supposed to be my last photo, but, yeah, this is where I was Sunday, so I just want to say, that game at Allianz Stadium, that was an amazing, amazing experience, and, and I just want to thank Germany and Munich for being great hosts. It was really fun to see all the Bucks fans that came out. A lot of people came that didn't have tickets, like Derek Wenton, he never was able to get a ticket. They said that they could have sold 3 million more tickets. And, and so, it's a great experience. Everybody stayed for like 20 minutes after the game, and they were singing American songs. The football players came back out, the cheerleaders came back out, and they were exchanging jerseys down on the field, and I, I just think, you know, go Bucks, and I'm glad we won. Most of the Germans there had no clue what was going on, and, and so, we were getting, we were helping our, our friends there do play-by-plays. We were with the former owner of, former CEO, Welbilt, who Hubertus Milhouser and his family. And while, I didn't put the photo up here, but I'm in line, there are 69,000 people in line, all at the same time, it was very dangerous, that, that part was bad. I hear someone go, is that, was, he said it in German, is that Catherine Starkey? So funny.
No.
Yeah. Michael, from the engineering firm that Bill Cronin and I have visited like four times that we're trying to get here, and Germany is standing two people over from me.
No way.
Yeah, so, and, and I'm with Hubertus, who knows everybody in Europe, and no one knew him, but, yeah, I'm like, "Oh, my God, it's Commissioner Starkey." So, I did take a picture, I'll, I'll show that later, and we sent it to Bill Cronin, so that was pretty crazy.
Good.
Okay, one more picture. Okay, so, no, can you go to the other picture first? This is something that I started to look at, Commissioner Oakley, I was trying to see this, and I think it's in your two districts. If you look at this development picture, and you see, see where it says the Learning Connection up there? I don't even know what development this is, but you see that neighborhood where it says Learning Connection, you come down, if, if you're, let's say you're, you're middle school or lived on that street, and their friends were in this development down, down here, just south of it, they would literally have to get on their bike or car or have mom drive them, miles, miles up County Line Road, down Mansfield, across, I don't even know what road this is, and up, to be able to go play with their friends, putting all that traffic on the main roads. And I want to show an example of what we did in Longleaf, that's the other picture, and I can tell you, there were hundreds and hundreds of people in the boardroom when our family was doing this development that didn't want these connections. And you can see where Longleaf Elementary is in the middle, and it connects to this neighborhood, Fairway Springs, up, you know, down near the bottom. It connects to this other neighborhood, Ellington, Ellington Place, and they did not want those connections. And people were going to die, their kids were going to die, all this, but you can leave these neighborhoods without, and go north or south without having to go through the intersection. You can drive through, you can take your kids to school without getting on 54, the buses can disperse all different ways, and so, I just want to show this example of why I think we should be making those neighborhoods connect. And so, I'm going to be doing these planning, I'm not a planner, but I think my planners would agree with me, that connectivity is so much better than putting every neighborhood out on a collector artillery in order to have to get to the next neighborhood. We're, we're going to have a disaster if we have a million people in our county drive around that way. All right, so, that is it? Oh, no, one more, one last thing. If you saw this, I wanted to shout out to the passing of Sandra Warner. So, Sandra Warner was one of the first two women to be elected to the Board of County Commissioners in 1980, and the first chairwoman of the board. She was a fourth-generation Pasco resident, whose family has a long history with Pasco County and the BCC, and her legacy will continue on. She was on with...
Our district.
Sandra was from Hildebrandt's district.
Oh, she was, she was on...
She's on the West Side.
Yeah.
And...
Sylvia Young, same time Sylvia Young.
Same as Sylvia, yeah, so, first woman elected to the board, so, goodbye, Ms. Commissioner Warner. All right, so now we have a special time, and who's running the show here? Is that you, Andy?
So, I, I'm going to jump in for one moment. I, Commissioner Oakley was kind enough to sponsor what's about to happen, so I'm going to turn it to him, but I will be helping floor manage this for videos, guests, PowerPoints and all that, so Madam Chair, I may run up to the microphone occasionally to do that.
All right, let's do it. And I have guests.
I just want to make sure, is that it right there? Yes. Okay, I've got, I have it to read, though. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Don't expect any of this to be true.
It's all made up.
Yes, made up.
All right.
Feet in line, do y'all that?
All right. Aww, look how little your kids are.
Play with this kid right here.
Oh, my gosh.
You got to drive up here?
Sure. Your family was so young. Okay, I'm going to read now. All right, resolution number...
I can't watch and read. I know.
There's 137 of them, you better read.
Okay, let's go. Resolution number 23-031, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, honoring Commissioner Mike Moore for eight years of service and dedication to Pasco County and congratulating him on his retirement from the Pasco County Commission. Whereas Commissioner Mike Moore was sworn into office on November 2014 and subsequently reelected in 2018, his campaign platform included public safety, infrastructure, and increasing employment in Pasco. He immediately became known as a well-prepared and fierce advocate for the citizens of Pasco County. And whereas during his time on the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Moore earned the trust of his fellow commissioners and was named both chairman and vice chairman twice. He was chairman in 2020 when COVID-19 first arrived, representing Pasco County government's response at the local, state, and federal levels. In March 2020, Chairman Moore called the first regional meeting of BOCC chairs and city mayors of the Tampa Bay area to discuss the potential impacts of COVID-19. And whereas Commissioner Moore has worked closely with the Pasco County Legislative Delegation to benefit the citizens of Pasco County. Commissioner Moore's work includes working with legislators, stakeholders, and the Florida Department of Transportation to expand State Road 56 from Wesley Chapel to Zephyr Hills, working with the legislative leadership to move up work on the diverging diamond interchange from starting in 2024 to being nearly completed in 2022, and many other legislative appropriations and policy changes to benefit Pasco County. And whereas one of Commissioner Moore's proudest accomplishments is leading the charge for the creation of the first universally inclusive playground at Wesley Chapel District Park in 2019, which was a public-private partnership with donations from many community and organizations. And whereas some of Commissioner Moore's other major policy, policy accomplishments include working in partnership with the Pasco Sheriff's Office and his fellow commissioners on many ordinances and programs to keep Pasco County a safe place to live, work, and play for residents, visitors, and businesses. Ordinances to clean up blight, the Animal Abuser Registry ordinance, securing funding for a new indoor recreation center at Wesley Chapel District Park, and a long-planned library in Wesley Chapel, and increasing the number of jobs available to improve the quality of life for citizens of Pasco County. And whereas Commissioner Moore has served for many years as chairman of the Pasco County Tourist Development Council, working closely with team members and community stakeholders on the successful rebrand to Florida's Sports Coast. During his time in office, the county's tourist development tax collections from visitors have increased from 800,000 in fiscal year 2014 to 3.6 million in fiscal year 2021. And whereas at the time of his leaving office, Commissioner Moore sits on or chairs the following boards and committees in addition to the Tourist Development Council, the Pasco Economic Development Council, the Circuit Conflict Sixth Judicial Circuit, the Dependency Drug Treatment Court Planning Steering Committee, Government Operations Committee, Insurance Selection Committee, Public Safety Coordinating Council, Habitat for Humanity, East Pasco, and CARES. And whereas Commissioner Mike Moore's hard work and advocacy will be deeply missed by those he has worked with over the last eight years, including the fellow commissioners, county team members, and the citizens of Pasco County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby honors Mike Moore for his dedication and service to the citizens of Pasco County and congratulates him on his retirement from the Pasco County Commission and wishes him well in his future endeavors. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 15th day of November 2022.
Move approval. Second?
Any discussions?
Ordinances to clean up blight, the animal abuser registry ordinance, securing funding for a new indoor recreation center at Wesley Chapel District Park, and a long-planned library in Wesley Chapel, and increasing the number of jobs available to improve the quality of life for citizens of Pasco County. And whereas Commissioner Moore has served for many years as chairman of the Pasco County Tourist Development Council, working closely with team members and community stakeholders on the successful rebrand to Florida Sports Coast. During his time in office, the county's tourist development tax collections from visitors have increased from eight hundred thousand in fiscal year two thousand fourteen to three point six million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. And whereas at the time of his leaving office, Commissioner Moore sits on or chairs the following boards and committees in addition to the Tourist Development Council, the Pasco Economic Development Council, the Circuit Conflict Sixth Judicial Circuit, the Dependency Drug Treatment Court Planning Steering Committee, Government Operations Committee, Insurance Selection Committee, Public Safety Coordinating Council, Habitat for Humanity East Pasco, and CARES. And whereas Commissioner Mike Moore's hard work and advocacy will be deeply missed by those he has worked with over the last eight years, including the fellow commissioners, county team members, and the citizens of Pasco County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby honors Mike Moore for his dedication and service to the citizens of Pasco County and congratulates him on his retirement from the Pasco County Commission and wishes him well in his future endeavors. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this fifteenth day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Move approval, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Ah.
Now we can have some discussion.
All right, go ahead, start. Okay, we'll work this way.
We'll get these down there when you join your family.
Okay.
But you've heard a lot of, uh, real, true stories here today and, and things that come from people that you've worked with and how much they're gonna miss you. I'm here to tell you that's not true. But the fact of it is, I am gonna miss you. Cause we've shared being on this board for, well, I've been on here six years, so. Six of your eight years I've been here with you, so. Uh, I can say this, we always voted our vote as our own vote. We always did this, all the board members do that. And, uh, we respect that, your feelings from that vote, and it's your vote to vote for the citizens of Pasco County, and we certainly appreciate, and you've done that very well. So we thank you for all of that. You've been so involved in everything and anything, even, uh, introduced me to a new beer. What's the name of it?
Highlight.
Huh?
Highlight? It's a grocery item.
Was the one that, uh, for the.
Oh, Florida Sports Coast?
Forest Sports Coast.
It's Adam's deal, yes, yes, yes.
I don't remember that other one, but there's another guy you were drinking then. But no, um, you've done great things. I, I remember that you always came up here complaining about traffic for your neighborhood and your citizens. In fact, you brought most of them here with you, sports casts and all, all the things that came in sports in Wesley Chapel. I always tell you, you caused it. The fact of it is, it's been good stuff coming to Wesley Chapel, and it's made for the traffic, it's made, you know, and when we get Overpass opened up and then we get version Diamond completed, I, I've been told by Black Friday, that'll be open and you won't see any road sides or anything around there. So that's a good thing. And then other roads, like, uh, you'll see probably two lanes of, uh, the new alignment of Fifty-Two coming about and, uh, by the end of the year, which would be great. And then the completion of that sometime in, uh, midsummer, that they will complete that. But when those things happen, and since I've been here, and I know since you've been here, there've been F D O Ts, uh, had over four hundred million dollars worth of road projects right here in the county, and, and a lot of those roads are going east and west, which the, uh, Fifty-Six Street, which, uh, we shared out on the ribbon cutting opening that road, it was, it's very unique. And there'd been a road on Fifty-Six from Marsh Bridge over to Three Orange, it was a very nice road. And it was done ahead of time, uh, rather than waiting, doing two lanes and away. Waiting a long time and be stuck with a lot of traffic. We did the four lane thanks to the property owners out there working with the county. So a lot of great things have happened. I guess I can't quit talking about how much, I mean, I really will miss you cause, uh, you brought a lot, lot to this board while you've been here. And I certainly appreciate it, and I know our citizens do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, you did yours.
I did.
So I'll, um, Commissioner Mary Wells, I was gonna put down this.
Just this way.
Uh, just from safety?
It's been a pleasure.
Here's another one of those.
It's been a pleasure working with you, Commissioner Moore.
Words can't express.
He's trying to clean.
I. We had sort of a rocky start. But it's.
I came in hard.
It's, uh.
You laughed about that.
It has been, it has been a pleasure to work with you and to, and to, to have you on the board these last eight years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I need a recording on this.
It's been a short, long, two years.
Commissioner Mariana?
Thank you. Uh, Mike, it goes way back to when we're sitting down having a craft beer, and you told me that you're gonna run the first time. And I told you on the spot, I was gonna endorse you, and back you went. Uh, I'll tell you what, I'm so glad I did that, cause you've done a phenomenal job. Uh, working on things with you, such as when we had a hockey rink that wanted to come on with George Mitchell and Gordy Zimmerman, and we're gonna charge him a million dollars of impact fees, and we've gotta find a way to get this done, to finally get it done to a manageable number. Uh, that is just like the type of thing that you did. You, you looked at things and you jumped on them. Um, you took an awareness to what was going on with Seven Oaks, your neighborhood, but the whole Wesley Chapel area with the apartment barrage going in and how we had to go deal with that. And, and I would say when I first got in, we had to deal with all sorts of other traffic things before that we'd taken care of, but when you just kept pounding stuff on, you paid attention to what was going on. You, you, you and Andy are a great team, kinda digging right in there and finding out what was going on, different things with, uh, food banks being given away on, on our, in our area, which we expected to have. That, that type of attention to detail made it better. You made us all better commissioners with your diligence of what you brought out. Um, the Verging Diamond, I mean, what, what a great thing to move that thing forward as quick as we did, and we definitely needed it, and it's working. Um, you know, Commissioner Oakley, you know, partnering between you two is like whose district park it is.
Yeah.
Getting stuff done out there. But, but, but work together. And, and I will say, you know, Commissioner Wells, when you came, came on, all of a sudden it was like, let's get stuff done. And I think we can say for eight years, we've really got stuff done more than ever before in this county, the way it's gone. And your impetus, uh, together, both you coming on, Commissioner Oakley coming on too. I mean, we just, all of a sudden, I think we just started moving stuff like never before. It's been, it's been fantastic to serve with you to get all this stuff done. Uh, for someone who got in to try to make things happen, you did all that. And, uh, you kept a great family balance as well, which is great to see.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I wish you all the best of the future. I know you're gonna be successful wherever you go, but it has been a, a true honor to serve with you.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
I think there's others to speak.
So it's my turn? I think I turned my mic on. I did, it's like, I always forget, there's a no cough in the mic. Well, um, so Mike, it's, got it, that went fast.
I know, it did.
And, um, frankly, I thought we'd have you longer, so that's, it's sad to see you go. I, um, really enjoyed your, um, professionalism and your dedication. And, you know, he was, he was, uh, involved in Pasco County before he ever ran. And those are the kind of people I like to see run, people who have already proven that they care about their community. So that's my ideal candidate. And, um, it's been a pleasure to get to know you better, cause like, like Jack, I knew you from before, and when you said you were gonna run, I wholeheartedly supported that as well. Um, uh, a lot of great accomplishments for those eight years and, um, and legacy that will continue on after you're gone. And, um, but I know you're not going far. Um, we're still gonna have you, and I'm sure we're gonna hear you and see you, so, um, I look forward to that. I actually have a gift for you.
He's gonna be at public comment every day.
Oh.
And, um. Commissioner Fitzpatrick? I have one for you too. If you remember, um, during COVID, um, we collected recipes, uh, in, in my newsletter, and, um, P H S E, uh, they printed out the, um, the cookbooks. So I have a, a set of the, the cookbooks from.
Oh, yeah.
And I, you may have something in there.
Oh.
I, I can't remember. Some of y'all sent, um, recipes, and, um, and so some of them are in there. Um, but enjoy those, um, cookbooks, and you'll recognize a lot of the names in there.
Thank you.
And, um, we wish you, um, great success in your next endeavor. I'm hearing rumors, but, um, soon we'll know what it really is.
Give it free orange juice out of the cap, boy.
And, um, uh, Andy, do, is the fa, do we want the family to say anything? Or are we gonna take the photos, or what's our plan?
Don't put her in the middle of the spot.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm gonna do that, I would. If Lauren wants to, I didn't prepare her to say anything, but if anybody wanted to say anything, they can. But we do have two very special guests to speak. Uh, while the, Commissioner Oakley was not kidding, by the way, that really is a hundred and thirty-seven slides I put together for this. Um, we do have our property appraiser and tax collector here that are prepared to say a few words for Commissioner Moore. And that will take us through the end of the PowerPoint, and then we have a couple surprise videos to show.
Fine, well, I'm really enjoying the, the PowerPoint, that's it. All right, uh, Mike, you're closest to the mic, Mike Wells Jr., so come on up, and then, uh, whoever's next. Come on up.
It's gonna be a lot.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. How's everybody? Let me get my list here. Wow. I, I, looking at those pictures and looking at your fantastic family, we are getting old. We did not have much gray back then. We both have it. I know I've lost, my, my hair's falling out. Um, it's been a long eight years. I can tell you, talking about the highlight, I remember us out preparing for debates, maybe with some highlight to help us get the, we did pretty good, obviously, we're here, so, so that worked out good. But he turned me on to highlight as well, which is very strong. Um, we're on the record, so I'll just leave it at that. Um, I don't wanna say too much, but let me just say, you know, Mike, it's been, it's been an honor to serve with you the six years. It's been an honor to be sworn in. Um, it was awesome. With the families, yeah, I see your mom's here too, and, and just, just the friends. It was an awesome, awesome, awesome day. I'm sad to hear you, see you go, but we're all gonna be working with you, probably more closely, possibly, maybe. So, you know, since, since the time we got elected, you know, um, a lot's changed. And I'm proud of the projects and legacy that all of us had the opportunity to contribute to. Um, Commissioner Moore has done a great job for his district and all of Pasco County. And if you don't believe it, just ask him, he'll tell you. And, and all serious note, all, all serious, um, you've always been prepared, passionate, um, about the work this board does. Um, and you, you've heard every commissioner say it, and how those decisions impact the lives of our residents. Uh, when you feel something's right, you speak up and fight for the voices of those you represent. I don't think anybody can deny that. That's absolutely not a bad, bad trait at all. Um, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. It's been a pleasure to call you a colleague, but really, it's been a pleasure to call you a friend, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited for you, and, uh, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
That was a great picture, that one that just passed.
Yeah.
I always called down the two mics, here we have three mics.
Yeah, three mics.
Wells kept it short. Impressed today. Commissioner Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Mike, um, you know, I'm a big believer in helping the little guy and gal out, and you have led the charge as a commissioner on this, on this board and, uh, over the past eight years. Uh, you didn't look at someone based on who they were, but what they needed and, and, and how you can help them. And you have done that overwhelmingly, and I thank you for that. You've done something more important, though. Something that we lack in government today. You brought common sense to this board, you brought common sense to Pasco County, brought common sense to government. Um, and, and because of that, our county now leads the way. Um, you've been a, a leader in our Tourist Development Council. Uh, I know that it was mentioned three point eight million. We actually took in five point million dollars this year because of, of you, because of your leadership, because of what you've done over those past eight years. Uh, you brought economic development to this county like never before. And I've lived in this county for fifty-two years, I've never seen anything like it, and it's because of your leadership. You've brought more high-paying jobs to this county because of your leadership. Um, uh, we're no longer the stepchild to Hillsborough and Pinellas County. We are now leading the charge in the Tampa Bay area, and it's because of you. Um, you're a dear friend. I wish you all the best, and, uh, I wish you, I wish you weren't leaving us because, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna lose a, a, a great person, a great guy, a great family, if you will, from, um, uh, and you speaking out for what's good for our county, what's good for our community. And you will be greatly missed. God bless you, sir.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for letting me do this, by the way, I know it's unusual. So now we can stop the slideshow, and we have two very short, I promise, uh, surprise videos. And again, Commissioner Moore had no idea these were here. If, uh, Desiree will take, take that and play those back to back. And then that will be the end of that, and go to whatever Commissioner Moore would like to say.
I want to thank Commissioner Mike Moore, congratulate him and his families. You know, entering a next chapter of life. Chapter reading, you know, I want to say thank you very much. You know, you make public safety a priority, you trust the sheriff's office, but I know there's greater things ahead of you, because the legacy you've left within our county now, improving it, making it better, it's tremendous. But for you and your family, I want to wish you all the best as you enter this next chapter. You know, I know great things are ahead for all of you, and may God bless you in your journey.
Commissioner Moore, congratulations on being here to serve in Pasco County. From the first time we met, it was time when we already seen, I knew you were destined to great things and great things to come. I appreciate all of what you've done for Pasco County and set an example of what a servant is. From your time as a radio host to Sports Coast, to all that you've given back to this community. I really appreciate that. I also want to thank you for being my friend through all these times. I can always count on you to take that phone call, get advice, and sometimes even give advice that I don't think you took. Wish you well, whatever your endeavors are in the future. And but, since you got a little bit more spare time now, maybe you'll get with Kathy Wells and learn how to, you know, captain a fish in the water.
Oh, that's funny. That's funny.
All right, you're up.
Oh, boy. I'm gonna keep it sh, I'm gonna do my best to keep it short.
Good luck.
It's my last hurrah, right?
Well, yeah, get your last word in.
Seriously, it's, it's, it, thank you all, all so, so, so very much. Um, this is a surprise, you know? And thank you to my surprise guests and my family, and Senator Frisano, and, and property appraiser Wells, and our friends that did videos for us. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't expecting it. But, um, you know, I, I for, I was gonna go over a little bit about some of the great accomplishments that we did and we did together, um, but you've mentioned a lot of them already, so I won't, I won't rehash it all. But, you know, you go back to eight years when I decided to run for public office, and, you know, it, it takes a lot of thought and, but it takes a lot of encouragement, a lot of support at the same time. So first of all, I wanna obviously thank my family that's here today for being very supportive of me when I ran and ran through two elections, and always being there for me through the years. And most of you know one of them, it's my wife Lauren, and there's my son Aiden, and it's Amberly, and my daughter Aubrey, and there's my mother Alice on the, on the end there. So thank you all so very much for all your support through the years. I'm forever grateful. Again, I'll, I'll mention, I, I know I had Terry and Andy come up earlier, but, uh, you can't do this without an amazing team. Um, and so thank you again, Terry and, and Andy, for all your support, um, throughout the years. And, and my friends, my, my, my buddy John Pilch is out here, and, uh, my best friend, and, and, uh, uh, you know, we go back to the support, you know? It's not just family, but it's your friends and your supporters and people you meet out in the community throughout these years. And I have a lot of friends that are here in the audience here from the, from the community, and I appreciate you being here and some of you sticking around, um, to, to see this. But, um, my fellow commissioners throughout the years, thank you all so, each one, and one of you so very much, and former commissioners as, as well. Um, like we said, we, we accomplished a lot here. Um, but we couldn't, you know, we didn't always agree, but I'll tell you what, we had some pretty good cohesiveness up here. If you look at what happens across the state and some of the other boards, I'm just being honest, you know? We have a lot of cohesiveness here. Um, so we were able to accomplish so, so, so much together. But it wouldn't happen without a, a great team and, and, and Nikki up here. And thank you for everything you've, you've done and your, and your department does. And, and thank you to Jeff and then Mike Cabal and the entire team and, um, and, you know, I'm gonna get a little choked up here for a second.
I know. I'm not looking for goodness.
I see Adam out there and, and Kathy and, and Sally and more. Though, I, I'm gonna leave somebody out if I keep telling, calling names out. And Ralph back there saying, you know, thanks for all your, obviously, your support throughout the years and what you do in the sheriff's office. Each and every one of you, you know, again, it, it takes, just like any business, right? And I refer to, and people, a lot of people don't like when I say this. A lot of people don't like when I say this, but if more, more local governments and counties throughout the nation treated it more like a business, more people would be, more of them would be successful. That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. I look at us here as a board of directors of a very, very large corporation with a one point, what, seven billion dollar budget, whatever it's gonna be there, two billion dollar budget. Okay, it keeps going up, right? Two billion dollar budget. And, um, our citizens are our shareholders, right? Those are the shareholders. That decides who makes the day-to-day decisions, who sets policy. But in reality, we hire a CEO, you know, to, in reality, to run the ship, right? And I think if more people treat it, or more counties and cities across the, the nation treat it that way, they would see successes like we've seen here in Pasco, and they, and they truly, really would. Um, I, I am gonna skip over, I had some words I was gonna say during miscellaneous business, but I'm gonna, Ron's looking at this and going, ooh, that's long. But, but, um.
It's a fairly large font, though.
But I, but, and the citi, to the citizens of Pasco County, you know, you're the ones that elected me. So I thank each and obviously every one of you for your support. And even if you didn't vote for me, you made the wrong decision, but even if you didn't vote for me,[1796.88] vote for me, um, I, I, I still think I did a, a good job of, of representing you through, through those years. It was kind of a, you know, I laugh about this cycle because I hadn't filed it, it was filing against me, this would've been my easiest uh, run yet, I don't think I was, I was just gonna be able to breeze through, but uh, but, but the other, the other two, I do wanna thank obviously all, all my supporters and friends I've made throughout the years, and I'll be forever, forever grateful for this experience. And you know, really with, with that, I just, I feel, you know, fulfilled, and that's, you know, we, you make the decision to leave, it was a tough decision, we talked about it as a family many, many times, right, and friends, we, we talked about it. But you know, I felt fulfilled, and I felt that we were able to accomplish so, so very much, so I felt, I felt good about leaving, cause I feel the county's in great hands. If I didn't feel the county wasn't in great hands, then I would've, I would've definitely stayed. But I'm confident in the commission, I'm confident in the, in the new commissions coming in as well, and our, our current team, so with that, um, I will say it's been a wonderful journey, and I thank you all for being a part of it.
All right, we did the, we passed that resolution, correct?
Yeah, you did.
All right, so let's go down to the photo.
Madam Chair, would you like to declare us in recess if the county attorney's okay[1754.66]